All right, welcome back to the Bothell City Council meeting. We just came back from break in the executive session on litigation matters having to do with the Bothell Service Center and ordinance of that property. So we are going to move on to AB 16-059, Consider Adoption of a Resolution Regarding an Advisory Fireworks Ban Ballot Measure for the 2016 General Election. And Chief Van Horn is here to provide a staff presentation.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. On December 1st of 2015, Council adopted Resolution 1330, which placed an advisory ballot measure before voters on November 8th of this year. Then on January 19th of this year, Council directed staff to bring back this advisory ballot measure language for further discussion. So I have this ballot measure language for you, and I will put it on the overhead. And it's the same language that's within your packet. The other thing I will share with you is, out of the previous resolution, and it's been changed for this new resolution that you'll be considering tonight, there are exact dates. Before, we didn't have the Snomish County Election Guide, and we were off on a couple of dates. So the resolution, which is Attachment 3 for your consideration, has the correct dates in it. So with that, it's my understanding Council wanted to discuss this ballot measure language, and that ends my presentation.
Great, thank you. Questions from Council? Sorry, Councilmember Spivey, I didn't notice you were there until I opened the meeting back up. So Councilmember Spivey is at the podium, or at the desk. Councilmember Sandberg.
So I put a sheet of paper in front of each one of you, and it's got some color-coded language and some highlighted language. And it's dated April 5th. So does everybody have that in front of them? Okay. And I wanted to bring this back up for Council because I wanted us to reconsider the language that would be put on the ballot measure. So on December 1st, at the December 1st, 2015 meeting, the language presented by staff is the top paragraph. And I want to draw your attention to the words "consumer fireworks." So the language that was presented by staff had language relating to consumer fireworks, which is consistent with our Bothell Municipal Code. And then it was changed, and you can see that in our Agenda Bill, the word "consumer fireworks" was changed to "safe and sane fireworks" in the ordinance language where all the whereas's are. And in that December meeting, what we ended up with through a series of amendments is the language that is on the overhead, which was changed to prohibit all fireworks in Bothell. So if you look at the language above, there is an additional sentence, and it's written in blue, that says, "The prohibition of sale, possession, or discharge of consumer fireworks would not affect properly licensed permitted public displays of fireworks." And so what I would like to propose to Council is that we adopt the language on the top for the ballot measure and not the language on the bottom. And the reason is, the language on the bottom, which is the language again on the overhead, is essentially a language of absolutes. And the language, if someone was to, if a voter was presented with this language, they would either have to vote yes or no on banning all fireworks. And if they were to vote yes to ban all fireworks, this language would preclude having any kind of professional show. And as we're all taught from a very early age, that when you're taking a test, you never select the option that is always or never. And I think this gives, the language that we're working with now can confuse the issue, might give voters a false choice. Because I think what voters want to vote on is the top language, which was the original language presented by staff, which is, this is an advisory election to determine whether consumer fireworks should be prohibited, but still allow the option of a professional fireworks display. And so the bottom language, the language on the overhead, to me, is too absolutist. And I think voters will, well, I don't think we're going to get a clear understanding of what the voter's true intent is with the bottom language. So at the very bottom, I asked the Council three things. That number one, we adopt the language originally proposed in December 2015 to allow for the professional display of fireworks within the ballot language. Number two, replace all references of "safe and sane fireworks," which is in the ordinance, the resolution language, with the term "consumer fireworks," because that's what's consistent with Bothell Municipal Code 8.37. Nowhere in our municipal code do we reference or define what "safe and sane" is, but we do define what "consumer" is, so that is consistent. And then also, I would ask that we set a date prior to our August break to appoint pro and con committees. These are the people who would be writing either the pro or con statements for the voter pamphlet. I think the Agenda says that we have until August 6th to, I think it was August 6th, to appoint committees. And I'd like us to appoint prior to the August break, so that gives those committees ample time to write their statements for the voter pamphlet guide.
Very nice presentation. Is there any comments from the Council on this matter, discussion? Councilmember Ragnew?
I've been on the Public Safety Committee for a number of years. This item has come up numerous times. It's a yea or nay issue. People are adamantly opposed to fireworks, or they demand it's their God-given right to be able to discharge them. Not a lot of happy medium is in between. I don't find a whole lot of fault in what we're seeing from the chief right here. I don't think the city has had a display of fireworks in 30 years. Not saying that it hasn't and doesn't have the potential. I don't see that actually coming back, personally. I think with the weather that we're getting, with the heat, with the banning of them, or the ability for us to ban them, you know, we need to let the citizens talk. We need to let the citizens vote. I don't find a whole lot wrong with this. I think it's going to be a close vote. I think, you know, 49% are going to say yes, get rid of them, or keep them, and 51's going to say the opposite. It's a hotly contested item, but I agree that it needs to go to the citizens and have the citizens make the decision.
Councilmember Ragnew, just to make sure you know, so that an advisory ballot measure, the public doesn't get to make a decision, they just, it's an advisory ballot measure, which is different, so they don't actually get to choose, they're just giving us advice whether or not we will ban them as a...
Right. And if the advisory ballot comes back that they want to ban them, then we're probably going to come back with something a little later on.
Right. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure for the listening audience, they understood that this is an advisory ballot measure, and it's not, the public has to decide, the City Council still has to make the final decision. So any other discussion on this item? Councilmember Spivey?
Great, thank you. You know, Councilmember Sandberg, I think you did a nice job with this. I agree that having the exception would be to allow for professional public displays, much like the way City of Bellevue does. We did have a public fireworks display within the last 10 years. It was kind of the culmination of Riverfest. It was at Popkinney. It was considered what they call a low-level display, but we did have one, so. And I would like to be able to have something, you know, in the future. That one was not on the 4th of July. But I appreciate all the hard work that you put into this, Councilmember Sandberg, and I would support the, what you have there. I would support your bullet points down below with, but I would just maybe in your bullet point number two, on references of safe and sane fireworks with changing to "consumer," I think just adding a line in there that recognizes that the fireworks industry, you know, they call them safe and sane fireworks, that we just need to recognize the industry standard of safe and sane is what we are calling "consumer," so that it's clear in that regard. And we could have "consumer" throughout at that point. But I would support your three bullet points with that one caveat and the proposed language up above. I know staff has put a lot of hard work into this, and we changed it once, and this is, your proposal is more reflective of what they had proposed before. And if you can find a happy medium between yes and no, this is probably the closest thing you can get. So, and I appreciate the chief and the rest of the staff for working on this and also. But yes, I would support this proposed language and bullet points.
Deputy Mayor?
I also support the changes that you've recommended and all three bullet points, and I do appreciate Councilmember Spivey's addition to bullet point two, that "safe and sane" is an industry standard, although quite loaded. Quite loaded verbiage.
Anybody else would like to speak on this motion? Or, I'm sorry, it's not a motion. I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'd like to make a motion that we revise the advisory, fireworks advisory ballot language to read as follows. City of Bothell, Advisory Proposition 1, Sale, Possession, and Discharge of Consumer Fireworks in the City of Bothell. The Bothell City Council is calling for an advisory election to determine whether the sale, possession, and discharge of consumer fireworks should be prohibited within the City of Bothell. The prohibition of the sale, possession, or discharge of consumer fireworks would not affect properly licensed and permitted public displays of fireworks. Shall the sale, possession, and discharge of consumer fireworks be prohibited in the City of Bothell, yes or no? And did you want me to wrap it all in as an all-encompassing motion? I can continue, so that's...
I think we're fine with just one motion.
Okay, so, and then the second part is in the resolution language to add a whereas clause, recognizing that "safe and sane fireworks" is an industry standard definition, and to replace references, other references of "safe and sane fireworks" within the resolution with the word "consumer," to be consistent with Bothell Municipal Code 8.37, and to set a date prior to the August break to appoint pro and con committees.
Okay, do we have a second? Seconded by Deputy Mayor. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Spivey?
I'd like to make an amending motion.
Go ahead.
In the advisory, advisory vote, vote language that was just presented, following each time you see the word "consumer" in parentheses, adding "safe and sane." We're changing it in the resolution, in the whereas's, but we're not changing, the ballot language doesn't reflect those changes. So just to make sure that everybody's aware of "consumer" and "safe and sane" on the ballot measure being one and the same.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Ragnew to add to the ballot language after "consumer" to have in parentheses, okay, "safe and sane fireworks," or, I'm sorry, just "safe and sane," and then it would carry on with the sentences as presented by Councilmember Sandberg.
Could I have a, ask a clarifying question? Would it be in parentheses in the quotations, "safe and sane," as a sort of a...
Well, it's just, it would be just to reflect the industry standard of what's out there so that people look at, looking at the ballot language, understand that "consumer" and "safe and sane" mean the same thing. It's, your motion put that in the whereas's of the resolution, but it's not in the ballot language. And I wanted to make sure that the people voting on this understand that it's one and the same.
Does that clarify?
That does clarify, but I just, I want, is it in parentheses? Because "safe and sane" is, well, it's not in either Bothell Municipal Code or in RCW.
No.
But I know it's an industry standard, so...
But it's what the, it's, when you go to the stand to buy them, it says "safe and sane." So I want, I just, it's a means of connecting the two, "consumer" to what we're proposing the vote is on, making sure that they understand what they're voting on.
I can support that if it's, if it comes after "consumer" parenthetically with quotation, "safe and sane," if you're accepting of that.
I will let the experts determine, but I do have parentheses, I did say parentheses, so...
Not quotation marks, he said parentheses. Do you understand that? Because you're going like this.
And I would like, I would like both. It's, I know it's wordsmithing, but, but we can let the, we can let the experts decide. Cringe.
Okay. So we have an amending motion to add "safe and sane" after the word "consumer" in the ballot language. Is there any further discussion on the amending motion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we have one, all of them, oh, I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor is opposed, passes 1, 2, 4, 5 to 1. With Councilmember Freed absent an excuse, so now we're back to the main motion, as amended. Any further discussion on the motion? Nope. All those in favor say aye, and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously with Councilmember Freed absent an excuse. And we are on to, oh, great, my computer turned off. AB 16-060, Consider Adoption of an Emergency Fireworks Ban Ordinance. And we have Deputy Chief Frank Shasky to provide us with the presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, Frank Shasky, Deputy Chief Fire Marshal. And you have before you tonight an Agenda Bill action item on emergency fireworks ban. Starting last year about this time, we were coming out of winter, there was a record-low snowpack. We already were experiencing a dry weather pattern, and we moved on into the spring and the summer, and we experienced a record-setting, not only warm, dry weather pattern, but wildland fire event for the year. Lost three firefighters. We had record-setting property loss. I'm still searching for the number of homes and buildings that we lost and the value of that. Have not found good information on it. Record number of acres burned, 1,137,664. It costs the state $2,530, or $30 million to fight the fires. And again, I have not ascertained property loss and/or economic loss, which will also be significant. There were many evacuation warnings and orders. The most significant aspect of the 2015 fire season was that there were red flag warnings in western Washington as early as May. So a red flag warning is issued by the National Weather Service. It's an indication that there is a high wildland fire hazard, and so conditions are such that it would take very little to start a conflagration. So those are, those were issued. We also had significant wildfire events west of the Cascade Crest in July and August. In fact, the Queetz Fire started, I believe, in spring around, it was burning already by May. Queetz Fire, it was in the Olympic National Park, old growth timber, burned all summer long and eventually went out when the rains came. Do I get a pointer with this? Oh, yeah, here we go. So I mentioned the Cascade Crest, and if you watch the pointer as I just walk it up the stream, I'm just, or screen, I'm literally just following that. And right there where I have the pointer, basically just west of there is the town of Diablo. It was evacuated. Down towards the south end of the Olympic Mountains, where's my pointer again, right there, that is in the area of Mineral Lake. And in September 8th, when I presented for the study session, they were under an evacuation warning. And we were thinking that if the weather didn't change, they were going to have an evacuation order. Literally within two days after the study session, it started raining, and that event was over. There's the town of Mineral under the evacuation level-one warning. That was August 27. This is Shelton, Washington. Their idea of a brush fire is much larger than my idea. This looks like a wildfire to me. In fact, there's crowning fire off to more the right of the picture, so, but they did call it a brush fire there. But this was in Shelton, Washington, significantly west of the Cascade Crest. Shelton is in temperate rainforest, generally a wetter area. So this was a significant event in western Washington. There was a lot of discussion about more must be done to prevent future fires. There was a lot of discussion last year about the weather pattern continuing in a warmer and drier pattern as we move forward. And that led to a discussion, again, with the fires in Queez in May. The governor declared a drought emergency, and fire officials statewide started to discuss the idea of an emergency fireworks ban. I can tell you that last year, just before 4th of July, my phone was ringing off the hook. I normally, on a normal 4th of July season, will get about a half a dozen phone calls complaining about fireworks. Generally, the noise causes my pet to get upset and so on and so forth. Last year, 35, I logged 35 phone calls plus an equivalent amount of emails, so I had a significant increase in the amount of complaints that were coming towards the Fire Marshal's office. Governor Inslee declared emergency fire conditions July 2nd. And one last thing to mention here is the RCW prevents an emergency ban unless local ordinance is in effect. And so you have to pass a local ordinance, and it is, if I get the terms right, once you enact, you wait for one year period, and then it goes into effect. That's per the state statute. So we're proposing to amend Bothell Municipal Code 8.37. It's modeled after existing municipal emergency firework ban ordinances. It does require the city manager to consult with public safety, fire, and police for the best available public information pertinent to conditions, and then recommend to Council an emergency fireworks ban. Sample resources, National Weather Service, National Integration, agency fire center and Northwest inter-agency coordination. Emergency ban if issued prohibits retail sale and use of consumer fireworks. That is the typical term related, or used for retail fireworks. If enacted by Council, effective days, one year later. And so, thank you. I'm available here for questions.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Do we have any questions? None? Thorough presentation, there's no questions whatsoever. Oh, Councilmember Spivey?
I was just going to move to recommended action.
Second.
Let's have a motion by Councilmember Spivey, seconded by Councilmember Sandberg, I think it was, she beat you this time, to adopt the proposed ordinance, amending BMC 1837, providing Council authority to issue an emergency fireworks ban during periods of high fire danger. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilmember McNeil?
So just to clarify, if we adopt this, it's going to not be in effect this year. It will take effect next year, or one year from the date that we adopt?
Correct.
Correct? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
And Councilmember Ragnew?
Well, I'm definitely in support of this. Whether you believe in global warming or not, we seem to be getting warmer. We seem to be getting drier, although our snowpack is pretty good this year. People are still up spring skiing, they got to love that. The problem we have is that the other side of the mountains gets pretty dry pretty quick, and they get some winds over there, and it just gets going. I've lost a number of friends fighting wildland fires. I don't like it very much. What I think about it is academic. I think we should have adopted this a year ago when it was a lot hotter, but we didn't. And I'm glad to see that we're finally going to adopt it now.
Councilmember Sandberg?
I think this is an important tool in our toolbox, that the deficit of not having one was highlighted last summer, when pretty much no one could enact an emergency ban because nobody had the authority, including the governor's office. So I think it's important to enact an emergency ban prior to this July 4th, so that we have this tool for upcoming July 4th situations. Because in the event that our advisory ballot shows us that the people do support having consumer fireworks, we need to have the ability to use best available public safety information to protect our public safety. So I think this is a necessary tool, and I will be supporting the motion.
Great. Councilmembers Spivey?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the chief for all your presentation and all your work on this, and I will be supporting this.
Any other comments? So I had, just had a quick one. Last year, the weather was so dry and so bad, I have three little boys, and I wouldn't let them let fireworks off. And I was really surprised that some people moved forward with letting fireworks off, especially the large illegal ones, knowing very well that you could just light your neighbor's house on fire, or the trees next to your house, and then their house. So I definitely support this. I was actually surprised as well last year when we had that situation come up, that there was no capability for a city to protect itself from fires and try to do an emergency ban. So I fully support this. Appreciate the fire department for pulling this together for us, and I do support the motion. So I think we're done. Yep. All right. All those in, oh, should I read it? Does everybody know what we're voting on? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Raise your hand. Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously. Councilmember Freed absent an excuse. We, could I entertain a motion to extend the meeting, please?
Move to extend to 9:30.
Moved, is there a second? Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Sandberg, seconded by Councilmember McNeil to extend the meeting till 9:30. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4 to 2. Pass, passes four to two. We'll try to make this fast, hopefully it'll be done here quickly. AB 16 dash zero six one, consider approval of supplemental funding for the Wayne Golf Course Visioning Project. And we have Director Keats to provide a staff presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Council. This, yeah, this is a presentation for potential visioning process for the Wayne Golf Course. February of this year, as you know, Forterra announced purchase of the back nine at the, at the golf course with the anticipated closing for the front nine, actually in April of this year as well. The city has a limited time to raise the funds necessary to purchase the land for future conservation and public recreation. By purchasing the golf course property and agreeing to hold the property for three years, Forterra has provided the city with the time to accomplish visioning and fundraising and plan for future budgeting. Starting in January of this year, the Wayne Golf Course Committee began meeting. We meet biweekly. Committee is comprised of City of Bothell staff, King County staff, members from the Organization One Bothell, Forterra, along with the mayor, deputy mayor, and Councilmember McNeil. Through the meetings, the county committee has done a lot of work, but have identified two high priorities. One is the need for some public outreach or visioning for the potential future use of the property. And another is identification of a number of funding options for, to acquire the property. And that's mainly been through coordination with the partners, looking at a very large number of potential grant applications. So, the Wayne Golf Course Visioning, I guess, first question is why do that now? There are a number of good reasons, I think. First, starting public outreach, promoting community conversation regarding the city's potential acquisition of the golf course and get some feedback on what type of development the public might support at that site in the future. Another is development of a preliminary concept plan, not a full-blown completed mark master plan, but just a concept plan that would, based on public input, that could be used for grant application and estimating possible development and maintenance costs. But also provide fundraising guidance. That way, when we do go after basic funding sources, we're looking at funding sources that would be consistent with the vision. Don't get in a position where you potentially get funding from a particular source and find out after the, after the fact that some of the potential uses that you would envision for the property can't be, can't be realized. Also, there's a good possibility for public education, just educating the public on the steps, costs, and challenges associated with acquiring, maintaining, and operating the golf course property. And then lastly, based on a preliminary concept plan, we could make some estimate of the future development costs and the future maintenance and operations costs. We look at substantial completion for the visioning by June of this year. And as I said, the funding strategy has been working with One Bothell, King County, and Forterra to develop a strategy to acquire the property, which, as I mentioned, has been the various state and county grants. Most grant programs, fund projects that meet specific criteria limitations can potentially restrict future use of the property, which may not be consistent with grant objectives. And in this particular case, so far, we've identified what I'd construe as conservation grants on one side and recreation grants on the other. And in some respects, they can be quite different in terms of what is a allowable use or what, what could be funded with the funding. And it's also important to apply for grants, as I mentioned, that are consistent with the future vision for the golf course property once, once that process has been completed. So staff is recommending approving funding in an amount not to exceed $35,000 for the Wayne Golf Course Visioning Project. I did forget to mention, but we would recommend that the funding source come from the King County Parks Levy funding. And that concludes my staff report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the Parks Director? We've beat you down. You're done. Okay. Do we entertain a motion? All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember McNeil, seconded by Councilmember Agnew to approve funding in the amount of not to exceed $35,000 for the Wayne Golf Course Visioning Project. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Councilmember McNeil?
I will definitely be supporting this motion. And I want to thank you, John, for all your hard work and staff as well, for what you're doing on this project. I think this project is something that shows what we can do when we all work together. I'm super excited to be sitting in the same room of Forterra, King County, the city staff. It, it means a lot to this community to see how we can accomplish things when we work together. And I look forward to doing it more across the city and other projects as well. So, thank you so much for all your hard work and dedication to this.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Spivey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be supporting this. I have received comment that there's been a golf course in Bothell for 80 years and that is part of our history. And that it, through this process, as much as any building or anything else, that should be considered a historical landmark in, in our city, that we've had a golf course for 80 years. And we've given historic status to things of, that are younger than that. And maybe we should be giving status to Wayne Golf Course as a historic landmark. Now, I'm not saying that the whole thing has to be golf course, but maybe it's an executive par three or something, but it, there's, I've received comments that, hey, this is part of the history of Bothell. We don't want to lose it. Adjust it, make it smaller, whatever, but let's keep a golf course in Bothell as part of our history. So I hope the committee, as they go through and the Parks Director, take, take that, take that into consideration. This is one of our historic sites in Bothell. So, but I will be supporting the recommended action.
Councilmember Agnew?
I'll be supporting the recommended action. I think this is a huge leap for the city. I think we can have something exquisite in that area. I understand the need or the want to keep a golf course, but I also understand that golf courses are going under by the thousands every year because the millenniums don't have enough time to go out and play golf. And that's, to me, that's sad. I learned to play golf on Wayne Golf Course. I remember coming home going, I shot a 121 at Wayne! And I was proud of that. If I shot a 121 tomorrow at Wayne, I'd be crying. But it's a great, it's a great tool that we have. It's a great resource that we have. And I think it can be dynamic. I think it'll be a key part of this city. Thanks, John.
Councilmember Sandberg?
I'll be supporting the motion and thank you to staff for their hard work. I think it's important that we have this conversation, these conversations with the community so that they understand, and we understand, what it is they hope to achieve in this property and what we can achieve through grant funding, given the restrictions of many of the funding sources. And so we need to have this kind of conversation so we don't have a mismatch between expectation of what the city wants and our ability to raise funds, not just for the acquisition, but for the ongoing maintenance and operation costs of this property. So I, I support the conversation on that so that we, we meet expectations of the public and they understand budget impacts in turn.
Would you like to speak? All right.
Thank you, John, for your hard work. I, I just wanted to say, as a member of the committee, we don't have audience members participate, but it's really powerful to have the amount of support and interest that we do from Forterra and One Bothell and King County. And it's, I think it just speaks to how important this piece of land is. And I hope that citizens participate because this is really their opportunity to tell us what they want. So, thank you.
So I too will be supporting this motion. I think it's important to understand a couple of things. One is that this isn't the master plan. This is a visioning process. It'll help us figure out what grants would make sense for the city to go after to try to acquire this land. The other part too, it became obvious to us that in the, in the group committee meetings that, you know, we didn't, we didn't have the full breadth of the input that we really needed to, to try to get just the vision in place. And so that's, that was a really big part of like why we need to go out now and try to get this, get this going sooner than later, because we do have grant applications that are due very soon and they're just keep coming. And so we needed something in the short term to give us a better idea of what the community is interested on this, to have on this property. I had one other comment, but I'll just leave it at that. Is there, all right, I think everybody's had a chance to talk. So, all those in favor of approving the funding in the amount of $35,000 for the Wayne Golf Course Visioning Project, say aye. Raise your hand. Aye? Opposed? Passes unanimously. I believe that's the end of our agenda. Let me make sure that is the end. Is there any city manager reports?
No reports, sir.
Okay. Motion adjourned. Oh, Councilmember Spivey?
Mayor, I would just like to give, excuse me, give an update. The North Shore Parks and Rec Service Area Committee met the other day and we had voted and approved a contract with North Shore Senior Center to operate the center. They also had approved that. So, North Shore Senior Center is no longer, they have not been under the umbrella of senior services. They're a standalone senior center and they are the operator of the NPRSA's buildings. So I just like to give that update since that was floating out there.
All right, great. Thank you very much. With that, we have a motion adjourned. Moved by Deputy Mayor. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember McNeil. Any discussion on the motion? Got a couple minutes before, okay? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? We are adjourned.
Ye little faith, Tom, but I knew we'd be done.